2025 pharmacy school district board of education meeting.
To the flag of the United States of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
President.
President.
Can you please confirm the meeting is currently being livestreamed?
Yes, it is.
Can you please, throughout the meeting, if there's a problem, please speak up immediately so that technical questions can be addressed.
As we will. So this brings us to information on board. All right, we're actually going to start with our retirees tonight. Just want to say before Dr. Schneider comes up that we're really grateful for your investments of really careers worth of effort, of time, passion, care about our children, and we're excited tonight to recognize you, thank you tonight if you are here. If you're out there, we wish you were here. The people who are here, we're very grateful that you took the time. It really helps us to put a face to the name, and you certainly deserve this personal touch. Again, congratulations on your retirement, and thank you for all that you've invested. Dr. Schneider?
All right, thank you, Dr. Swadlick, for the introduction to our opportunity to recognize some of our classified retirees. We'll call up your name. If you can come up, we'll say a few words and then take some questions.
Our first person that we would like to recognize is Donna Coley. Donna Coley has worked for the Parma Schools since 1998. She has worked at John Glenn and John Muir and is retiring from her position as a special education assistant at Thorough Park, working primarily with fourth graders. A few quotes from her file include "an asset, steady and reliable; her knowledge is well-received; one of the best assistants I have had the chance to work with; talented, excellent rapport, and extremely patient." A few words from Thorough Park Principal Mr. Bickley: "Donna is a delight. She truly cares deeply for the students, and she wants to bring out the best in them." You can tell she loves seeing the students grow academically and emotionally, and she takes pride in the work she puts in to help make that happen. She has a very kind, yet no-nonsense way of speaking to students that gets through to many of them, and they appreciate her. She's small but mighty.[738.98][738.98](LAUGHTER). Donna always has kind words, understanding, and advice for students who are experiencing any struggles, no matter how big or small. She is generous with her time and her words of wisdom. The same is true for adults. Donna is always encouraging and insightful with advice and helps navigate through situations and feelings. She will truly be missed. Congratulations on your retirement.[761.82][761.82](APPLAUSE). This time, we would like to recognize Lori Roan.[775.61][775.61](APPLAUSE). Lori started in the Parma Schools in 2005 and has worked as a classroom assistant, special education assistant, and one-to-one at several schools, including Arlington, First Step, Dag Hammershall, Pearl Road, Greenbrier, and Pleasant Valley, and she is retiring from Valley Forge. Quotes from her file include "a team player, an amazing addition to our building; displays empathy, reliable, diligent, friendly, dedicated, and has a great disposition; in a word, wonderful." Lori has great rapport with students, which is evident when she walks in the room and they run up to her with hugs. Valley Forge Principal Ms. Andrajewski stated, "Lori is kind and caring beyond measure. She nurtured her students with patience, encouragement, and genuine concern. Her support and camaraderie helped strengthen our Valley Forge family." Congratulations on your retirement.[834.82][834.82](APPLAUSE). Next person we'd like to recognize is Diane Price.[845.11][845.11](APPLAUSE). Diane Price was first employed by the Parma Schools in 1994. She worked at several schools, including Normandy and Pleasant Valley, and is retiring from her position as a special education assistant at Valley Forge. Quotes in her file include "kind, highly organized, calm demeanor even in the most stressful of times; a professional; keeps students at ease; an asset; an outstanding assistant and trusted member of the staff; her great sense of humor was noted several times." The Valley Forge Administration shared Diane is committed to serving students to meet their individual needs. Her warmth and empathy created a safe and welcoming space for every child. Her contributions have left a lasting mark on our staff and students alike. It's all from your files.
Really? Those are those people.[906.11][906.11](LAUGHTER).
We would like to call forward Colleen Moran.[910.00][910.00](APPLAUSE). Colleen started in the Parma Schools in 1995 as a noon monitor at Densler. She also worked as a cleaner and a laborer, and then moved to assistant custodian, working at Parma Senior High and Central Office. Quotes from her file include "positive and pleasant, considerate, always has a smile; great work ethic; strides to make everyone happy; excellent, pleasant, positive; Colleen can be counted on to do the right thing; diligent, caring attitude; compassion and sense of humor are invaluable; consistently outstanding in all areas." Colleen shared some parting words in her retirement letter, stating, "I want to express my heartfelt thanks to everyone at PCSD for making my career here such an enjoyable and rewarding experience. It's been an honor to work alongside so many talented individuals, and I am genuinely grateful for the opportunities I've had to contribute to our shared success. Thank you for your kind words and for your years of loyal service."
Thank you to our retirees tonight again. We really appreciate your being here, but more importantly, we appreciate the career that you've dedicated to us. Thank you. To our retirees and families, it is a socially appropriate time to be a part if you would like. You have a strategic planning presentation and the normal board meeting, so you're welcome to stay for that, but are also welcome to excuse yourself onto your other activities Okay, Ms. Bond, now we're going to go ahead and present highlights of our strategic planning efforts.[1027.22][1027.22](MUTTERING). What do I do? Uh, we're all gonna push this button.[1051.22][1051.22](MUTTERING). First time we're using this new book.[1061.83][1061.83](LAUGHTER). It's amazing, though. We didn't have to, like, knock each other off or anything. Thank you, Mr. Tivens, for the upgrade. It's our pleasure tonight to present ongoing reports to the Board of Education. We committed to working through this process twice per year.
We aim for January. We actually did the presentation in February and again in June as the end of the year. And we call this the Contract with the Community because it's really important to us that people understand that all the action steps that we engaged in came from the input that we received a year ago. And I understand that, you know, as time passes on and, you know, I understand there's change in personnel, there's change in leadership, and I acknowledge those things. But the community is still the basis of what we were able to accomplish here. I mean, we had over 1,400 participants in some form or fashion in coming together to say, "What are our strengths? What are our weaknesses? And how could we possibly improve?" And so this really should transcend any individual who may or may not be with our district. This is about our commitment that we made to the residents and the stakeholders and the taxpayers of our community. And so we're proud to present that tonight. Before we get into some of the specifics, you know that we always start our presentations with a review of our district goals. We try to give some updates as well, and there are some updates to provide. So first, we've always been about increasing student achievement, certainly the most important aim of any school district, is to make sure that we are providing an outstanding education that helps our students to elevate to levels that they would not see without us. And we have some really great news tonight. We recently received preliminary results on the 2025 Ohio State Tests. And understand that preliminary results are simply that. There is much data to work through. There are, it's really an onerous process called Where Kids Count, where sometimes students who tested with us don't necessarily, their score doesn't stay with us because they actually spent, you know, 120 days somewhere else. There are students that, you know, moved in, and so there's a lot of different sort of processes that we work through. And Dr. Lyer is here, and he leads that process. It's extremely tedious, and yet it's critical. As we talked about in the fall, we were .017 points away from being a four-star district. And so we talked about, and I know everybody hates this, but you're going to hear it one more time from me. We talked about rinsing the cottage cheese, that that was actually where we were at. And if you think about rinsing the cottage cheese, getting down to those last details to make sure that every single potential decimal of a point is accounted for. And Dr. Lyer has his hands full with that, but he's also extremely competent and extremely talented in fulfilling those responsibilities. Despite the fact, and that disclaimer that I just provided about the preliminary nature of our data, we can confidently say that in the tested areas that you see on the PowerPoint, we exceeded state averages, and we're very proud of those areas. We're proud of other trends, and we're certainly going to get into that, or Dr. Cruz and Dr. Hunt will get into that in the fall when they do the report card presentation. But right now, we can confidently say that we are very proud that third grade math, fourth grade English Language Arts, fourth grade math, eighth grade math, Algebra I, United States Government, and ELA II, in all of those areas, we surpassed state averages. We're extremely proud of that. We also talk often about improving transparency throughout our communities. We want to give a plug now, and you're going to see it throughout the summer as well, but our August 13th is sort of our back-to-school celebration of our community. We had aimed to have that earlier in the spring. We pushed it in in the fall to make it more of sort of a back-to-school event. I think Dr. Cruz will speak later about that in her action steps. And then we also will be at Ribbon Rock this week, and we commit to always being pillars of the community. And we want to make sure that folks see that we are proud parts of our school district's culture. And the Ribbon Rock is really kickoff to summer for Parma that actually begins tonight. You'll see us Sunday night in the beer tent. We don't necessarily partake, but we will be serving Parma some indulgence as they kick off their summer. Practice fiscal responsibility, just to sort of reiterate some of the key points of Mr. Nusio's presentation last week. We do, at this point with the new updated forecast, see a deficit of $12 million in 2028. And so obviously, November is critical. If we aren't able to be successful in November, then we would work through some type of fiscal reduction plan, which is uncomfortable. It is damaging to really all of us. We certainly don't want to have to get to that point where we're talking about making very difficult decisions, but that's also an acknowledgement of the reality of where we are fiscally. 2024-25, just again to sort of highlight where we're at, this year was about executing the plan. So last year was about building the plan. This year was about executing the plans. We had monthly meetings. We reviewed last year's data to sort of analyze again what the community was telling us. We explored current literature to look at some outside voices to say, you know, here's some other ideas that maybe you hadn't thought of in your school district. We drafted action steps. We actually exchanged that amongst each other's groups to rate each other's action steps. And then we started to define our plan, which is what you saw in February. We reported, it was supposed to say February at this point, but we reported, it was supposed to be January, we moved it to February, and now we have a June report. We could go into much detail, but last time, we can all acknowledge the fact that I think it took approximately three and a half days to get through the actual presentation. So we didn't want to spend three and a half days again, although we are grateful for the air conditioning in Normandy, and it is actually working, although today is day one of that. But we wanted to just really hit some highlights for the community and recognize the participants because we only have about half here, but you can really get a feel for the fact that this was a cosmopolitan view of the participants that we have. And again, it is a contract with the community. This isn't my plan, this is Mr. Nusio's plan, this is a community-driven effort, and we're grateful for the community members who have turned out tonight to be a part of this. My committee was actually district unity, and within district unity, that's sort of a broad topic, but specifically, we looked at approaches to discipline, approaches to restorative practices, approaches to support at different tiers of our pyramid of support. And the second piece was the sort of hoping to have equity across the district in terms of opportunities for students. And so really, our highlights, we did, actually, we were able to form common tiers of support. So now, when you go on the website, and when we're able to upload this for next school year, you'll be able to see, here's exactly what schools across the district have in place. So no longer it's, "They do this at Ridge Brook, they do this at Thorough Park, they do this at John Muir." You'll be able to see the actual district plan for interventions and for supportive students. We also will have linked to that apparent request for help. And so if a parent's on there and they're taking a look at these pyramids and they're saying, "You know, I think my student would really benefit for that," certainly we hope that we've already availed those resources to our students, but if not, the parent can trigger that process as well with an email through that survey. We also analyze extracurricular activities. We took a lot of data from across the district to see what students were participating in. I will be perfectly honest with you, our weakness right now is elementary. It really was a glaring weakness in terms of what we are providing, in terms of opportunities. And we also understand our fiscal position, and so we're not here to advocate for, you know, an addition of 15 supplementals at every school, but as we do make difficult decisions and as we do start to look at, you know, some other allocation of resources, elementary extracurriculars have to be a focus. We are not availing enough opportunities to our elementary students. So with that, I'm going to call forward the folks that were brave enough to participate in my committee. Megan Garafalo, who I don't believe is here, from Thorough Park. Wendy Jewell, if you can come on up, and you're going to actually stay up here, and then Mr. Tivens will take a picture of the committee. Thank you, buddy. Maven Kala is not here, but we appreciate her efforts. Aaron Brown is not here, we appreciate his efforts. Chelsea Jewell is here. Thank you to community member Chelsea Jewell.
And we didn't realize that we were the committee.
We're not related.[1606.83][1606.83](LAUGHTER).
Whatever. She was very active.
Catherine Dorris. Thank you very much. And Chelsea and Catherine are both parents in the district, and we're very grateful that they stepped forward to participate in this process. Thank you. All right, let's give a round of applause for our district unity committee.[1638.83][1638.83](APPLAUSE). Mr. Nusio was dying to have this presentation. He wanted to present 10 or 12 slides on his committee to it, but I really, I told him he really needed, he needed to come down and really just try to consolidate it to one slide. So, Mr. Nusio, your turn.
Only one. Ooh. Gorgeous.
So what we talked about are...
Talked about your star, and then same way I just did it.
So we're, so we were doing the monthly Financial Fridays, which is a, which is a social media little slider blurb as to different things in finance. We did, last one was property taxes, why property, why we depend so much on property taxes rather than like schools, rather than cities and the county and other entities? Because counties use sales tax, and they also get other sources of income, and cities have income tax. We're not allowed to do a sales tax. We could do an income tax, but cities don't like when we kind of infringe on their territory. So we're left with property taxes. So that was my last blurb that we sent out. And I've been trying to do this once a month, and hopefully I can continue that with different topics. So I will, these are the people that were part of my group, I'm not sure if they're all here. Lexi Sparrow. Lexi, Lexi. I have Michael Jugler. I see his wife, but she's shaking as a friend.
Do you want to come up and claim this certificate? Do you want to be part of the picture too?[1735.83][1735.83](LAUGHTER).
Molly, say, I thought it was Molly there. Yes. Mary Bond. I think she went past. I don't know if you can make her funny face.
You can really make her laugh.
There you go. And Debbie Lime, I don't think that's her. So that's my group.
All right, round of applause for Mr. Tivens.[1771.83][1771.83](APPLAUSE). Perfect, thank you. Thank you, ladies. Dr. Lyer, again, obviously he missed an assessment, but in this case, he was the lead on the communication team. Dr. Lyer? Dr. Lyer.
Good evening, thank you, Dr. Smiley. If Jen Danz joined me up here, Jen was one of our co-facilitators. The communications committee was a conglomeration of several committees, and so Jen, along with Megan Cooney, were the co-facilitators with me. We really worked to focus our communication strategy for the district. We basically picked the three areas of academic achievement, fiscal responsibility, and student well-being as the areas of our focus. So, if Jen, if you'll help me hand these out, please. Lonnie Higgy. Shannon Raveri. Rachel Urban. Renee Zernick. They're all various, they're working at home on our committee work as we speak. I know Jeanette Pacora is here. Stephanie Palmasano. And Michelle Derivian. Well, it was a great responsibility. We have some communication to work on with, but no, this was really a worthwhile event. We had some great discussions, I learned a lot, which is really important at the end. So, thank you.
All right, picture of three of you.
Yeah, all three of you.
Thank you, Dr. Lyer, and Mrs. Nan. Student success, Dr. Cruz.
One more to grab. All right, so we had two action steps that we are proud of. The first one, the first one is the back-to-school community event, which will be on August 13th, and this is really a celebration of our three communities, Parma, Parma Heights, and Seven Hills, and how our schools represent all three of those communities. So, at this event, obviously a fun time as we kick off the back-to-school time, but having resources for our families, all of our schools will be there, so kids will be able to come and have some fun, and our bands will be playing, we have some cheerleaders and some dances going on. So, we are excited about this event, and we hope you can all join us at, on August, Wednesday, August 13th, from 5:00 to 7:00. And then, if you wanna stick around, there is a family-community movie night that night. Not a part of our community, but you could enjoy that as well. So, that was an action step that we had as a committee of really looking at ways that we could celebrate who we are as a district and who we are as representative of our communities. The next one was, we wanted some more ways to highlight our districts, some of the positive opportunities that we have, both academically, sports, extracurriculars. So, we put together, with the ideas from our committee, a little video that highlights our diverse student population in our schools. So, we're excited about that. And that was, those are our two steps. So I'm gonna call up our group. Emily McKim. Brittany Hales. Yay! Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you, very good. Lorraine Prudoda. Amy Zirmer. Lauren Uchier. Listen, we have like 10% attendance every time, so I know it's not representative tonight. Ashley Evans. Okay, very good. Heidi Spangler.
Spritz again if you're on the committee.
We're almost on drugs. We're good, okay, all right. Allison Cokely. Woo-hoo, come on down. Thank you, Allison. And Amanda Rouse. And Amanda, do you mind bringing up the poster? So, I have one more thing to share. Okay, so, with the student success committee may come a little overachieving. So, this is the, all of our work in this amazing graphic representation. So, Amanda, she worked with the statewide Family and Community Engagement Center at Ohio State University, and she took the work of our committee and into this project as a part of the work that she was doing there. So it highlights our implementation plan, our outcome, some of the challenges that we faced as a committee. And then, here's the flyer for our back-to-school night event. And then, this is the logo for our work, and it's called, it's the community with the unity there kind of highlighted, and it's that embrace all that is such a part of the work that we do. So, thank you, Amanda, for going the extra mile. I mean, this is pretty impressive, right? You know, it's in a photo.
It's kinda hard to read.
Here, so grab that side. Just spread it out. All right.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, we'll leave it over here if anyone wants to look at all of our amazing work. Thanks to you. Yes, oh yeah, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. Excuse me.
Thank you, ladies, thank you, Dr. Cruz. Up next is Mr. Caldwell. Mr. Caldwell led our... Mr. Caldwell led our alternative funding work. That's an important way to show the community that we are really turning over every stone to try to find additional funds. Mr. Caldwell?
Thank you, Dr. Smiley. As you mentioned, I oversaw the alternative funding group, the committee, and like you said, as far as like financial transparency and things of that nature, we wanna make sure that we are, you know, we're being most unturned as far as looking for alternative funding, great opportunities and things like that, so we can continue to maximize the opportunities and the resources that we provide to our students. So, the first thing that we did was, we tried to identify the district needs and some new initiatives to seek alternative funds for additional opportunities and resources, not just for our students and our faculty, but also our community. And then, we also created a building-level needs assessment survey that we can start implementing next school year to kind of get a better understanding of what is needed at our buildings, so we can better understand that and hopefully provide the resources necessary for them to be successful. So, I'm gonna go ahead and introduce our participants. I think there might only be one here, but that's all right. We had Levinia Thai. Candy Graves. Samantha Drew. And Angela Schwark.
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell, thank you, Mrs. Schwark. Dr. Snyder.
For buildings and grounds, we covered really a lot, feedback from the impact groups, some great survey feedback, well over 1,000 touchpoints. And we narrowed in on these two, there were three, but the two highlights that I wanted to go over was, one, the facilities assessment, and that is really try to take a more comprehensive look at our roughly 3 billion square feet and 300 acres that we have throughout the district, and update some of our, basically, analysis of rooftops, HVAC, playgrounds, windows, you know, so on and so on. And then be able to use that to carry it forward into a long-year, a long-term plan, covering more than several years in terms of projects that we'd like to undertake. So certainly was time to do that. We engaged with GPD, and they're updating our OFCC reports from not that many years ago to try to carry that forward into the future. Second highlight here is systematic planning for restroom renovations. So, as you know, virtually all of the restrooms in the district are original to the time that the buildings were constructed. So they're, any restroom in really any point of the district, and probably is updated. So we wanted to start to take a bite out of the apple with that and be systematic in how we chose those projects. So we rated them in terms of condition, and then also in terms of usage by staff or students, and then ranked them in order, and then kind of tiered out which ones we would address in what sequence, so we could start to make some progress with the restroom renovations. Individuals that are on the committee that I know are here this evening, Caitlin Grant, would you like to come forward? Very much appreciated your efforts and contributions in the committee, and thank you for coming anytime. It's not here this evening, but Rob Borvastic was consistent contributor to the committee as well. And then, I believe, I thought maybe I saw Miss, she was not here. So that's you and me.
This morning couldn't be here this evening, so some of the highlights from the transportation committee, obviously that is an area where we've really tried to be aggressive in our improvements. So two highlights would be trying to continue to recruit drivers into the department. We've had some very aggressive staffing incentives that we've utilized this last couple of years. This specific action step was for our job fair, so we really tried to ramp up the efforts in terms of communication, and really just kind of went all out to try and bring people into the, most recent job fair in February.
We had over 70 people attend, which was probably three times what we've had in the past. We have, it says here, seven newly certified and 15 drivers in training and in the process of scheduling training. That's a huge leap forward. Our goal is 24 from the time we started this in February until Memorial Day, and we are on our way. I'm not sure we quite hit 24, but certainly have been very aggressive trying to get that. The second step here is upgraded routing and planning software, this has been long overdue. So, the department, along with some other stakeholders, went through a really rigorous process to vet the choices for our routing program. It's essential to have an updated routing program in Ben, I believe, running, pushing 10 years, since that's been updated. So there's a lot of issues with how the information in that database connects with the student information systems, and it just makes things much more labor-intensive than it needs to be, and obviously increases mistakes. So we have solidified the selection for that planning software, and also the parent app, which we have highlighted in the app this past year, and as you probably know, that was less than stellar outcome, so we're taking on the run at that with the program that went through that same type of vetting process.
I volunteered to run that.
Infermatch? Yeah, that would be something. We'll see if individuals on the committee are here this evening. We have Damon Nguyen. And the other one is Mr. Boggs.
Thank you to our transportation committee. Last but certainly not least, is the work that our special education team did under the leadership of Mr. Cass, the director of exceptional students.
So, our committee went through the feedback from the original survey, and through that feedback, we determined that we were going to make an exit survey about special education services. So when students withdraw from the district, they, the families are provided with this survey that they can fill out, and then we will review it quarterly to see if there's any improvements or any changes that we feel like we need to make with that. And then the other thing is that we created an accessibility checklist, so when we have to fill out building permits, people are able to see and have ideas of ways to make their rent more accessible. And then, our committee, the only person that's here is Brittany Hales, but we also have Jason Striker, who needs to be ready.
Thanks for coming anyway.
Just here for me. Antoinette Goins, Judy Greenwald, Tammy Sebastian, Katie Cook, Stephanie Boca.
Lovely picture here of the two of them. Thank you to all of you who are here tonight, and really, again, I appreciate your attendance tonight and to help us provide a little bit of a token of recognition for your efforts. I wanna really point out that, you know, there's certainly a lot more work to be done. I mean, we all came up with some ambitious action steps that, we have another few steps to take to actually implement all of that. However, I wanna point out that all of these were really visionary, there were things we weren't already doing. You didn't see on the strategic plan, teach math, or clean buildings, or write bus routes. You saw services and programs that would make it better. And so, all of the folks here tonight have whatever their daily roles are, and then they were also willing to take this on. And so we're very appreciative of the aspirational nature of the work that you completed through this process. So we can give one last round of applause to all of the folks from this district. Before we say the socially appropriate time and leave, who's almost all of you, because this was his cue. We also, as part of my report, Mr. Pelco is here. Mr. Pelco was appointed two board weeks ago as the new supervisor of safety and security and student wellness. We just wanted to introduce him, he was not at that meeting, but we wanted to make sure the community was able to put a face with the name. Mr. Pelco, you wanna say a few words?
I just look forward, thank you, and I look forward for the exciting opportunity to keep the students and staff and the community safe, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Pelco comes extremely highly regarded, again, he was the police chief in Elyria, which we know is a very demanding position, tests many, many different skills, and we're thrilled to get someone of his caliber to come aboard. So, thank you to all who came tonight, and this is a socially appropriate time to leave. If you don't wanna stay for the rest of the meeting, we certainly understand that. We appreciate your participation tonight, Bill. Thank you.
Before you leave, before you start, Mr. Vaughn, sorry. All right, I wanted to thank you for participating in this strategic planning process. It shows to me, your involvement tells me your commitment to make a PCSD a better system, and I appreciate that. I also appreciate all the hard work that the staff of the committee had led the committees, so I thank you for all your hard work, because without you, none of this happens. So I really appreciate that, that are fantastic. I don't know if anyone else has anything else to say.
Agreed.
Not even the House is socially appropriate time to get that going.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Mr. Vaughn, just for the clues, uh, clues by report.
Thank you, Dr. Smiley. Let's move to the communication.
I do.
You do.
I don't want you to hear it. Okay, so the Senate came out with terms of the budget bill yesterday, and that was before, yeah, you know that. It's different from the House budget, so they're gonna have to reconcile by June 30th before you have a budget. But one of the things in there is, they said they're gonna have $633.29 million more in funding, and you won't have funding less than the fiscal year 21. That's great with that, it's more than the fiscal year 26, that's money from five years ago, so we're still losing money compared to fiscal year 25. They said a 50% carryover instead of 30% carryover that the House has, that means the budget commission could adjust, our current balance is greater than 50%, so $150 million would have to be... so $150 million, we have to be more than $75 million, which we're not, we don't have to worry about that. They, like the House, they wanted to have a three-year forecast instead of a five-year forecast, which I talked about, which is a terrible idea. Why do long-term planning to short-term planning instead? And they went through the five, the three-year forecast in August and February instead of November, May, with the first one being due October 15, 2025, instead of November 30, 25. And they want to have a flat tax instead of different brackets for income taxes, and also, once again, except for, go up to $28,000 to $32,000, those are similar years. Those are some highlights and show their worries that we still might, any questions on any of that?
Were they reducing property taxes and going to another form of income, something like that?
There's so many different provisions and bills there that they, these are current schools, I guess, I don't know, let's see what they can come up with.
Is that it?
Yep.
Thank you. Right, I have a real quick announcement, I want to make sure everybody knows or minded her. We have a meet and greet to meet Dr. Scott Hunt, who was here with us today on Tuesday, the 10th, at 6:30 in the Normandy Auditorium. Everybody's invited, please. It'll be part of a quick special board meeting, and then Dr. Hunt will give a presentation, and you'll be able to meet and greet him. So that is on June 10th, Tuesday, June 10th, at 6:30.
This way, that's depending on the kind of business you want.
All right. All right, because I'm on my calendar, I'm like.
I figure everybody's gonna be there, so.
Yeah, that's why.
Anyhow, so that is June 10th. Also, today, I was fortunate enough to go to Greenbrier Middle School today for their carnival capstone. I see a lot of physics things, carnival games and stuff, and we love physics, always enjoy that. I won a little cushy ball from a homemade cushy ball from a Looney Tune game, which is all the cartoon characters, Bugs Bunny, et cetera. One of my favorite ones. There's mini golf and a couple other ball tosses and type things, different carnival games, so it was really fun. Tomorrow, I'll go to Pleasant Valley First Grade Capstone, which is their garden that they have outside of the school there. It's always a fun thing, kids tell us all about what plants are growing, which helps me identify my plants in my yard, weeds to flowers, so that's a really good thing. So that's all I have for communications. And we have graduation Saturday night.
Yes, 11 o'clock and 3 o'clock. We did send information about parking to parents, it's important to take a look at that, because obviously, road rock is immediately decided to stage themselves immediately outside of that. I do have shuttle set up though, by the old J.C. Fenny. There's still quite a few parking spaces.
So this brings us to, at this point, we open the meeting to public participation to address the board on tonight's agenda. We'll be having such requests, if not, very long. So I move to adopt resolution 2025-06-249, approval of written record of proceedings from May 27, 2025, Director of Education.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2025-249-06-249. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none. Mr. Lucio?
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes.
Ms. Ruda?
Yes.
Ms. Corr?
Yes.
Ms. Perfect?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-06-249 has been approved.
Mr. Vaughn, I move to adopt resolution 2025-06-250, authorizing purchase iPads for kindergarten students.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2025-06-250. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none. Mr. Lucio?
Ms. Ruda?
Yes.
Ms. Corr?
Yes.
Ms. Perfect?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2025-06-250 has been approved.
Move to adopt resolution 2025-06-251, authorizing a 2025-2026 membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2025-06-251. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none. Mr. Lucio?
Ms. Ruda?
Yes.
Ms. Corr?
Yes.
Ms. Perfect?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2025-06-251 has been approved.
Unless another board member has something to discuss, this concludes business.
Thank you, Ms. Ruda. This brings us to curriculum. Ms. Perfect?
I move to adopt resolution 2025-06-252, granting authority to the administration to enter into contracts with service-based agencies for the 2025-2026 school year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2025-06-252. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none. Mr. Lucio?
Ms. Perfect?
Yes.
Ms. Corr?
Yes.
Ms. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2025-06-252 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2025-06-253, granting authority to the administration to enter into contracts with various educational facilities during the 2025-2026 school year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2025-06-253. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none. Mr. Lucio?
Ms. Perfect?
Yes.
Ms. Corr?
Yes.
Ms. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2025-06-253 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2025-06-254, authorization agreement for assessment software subscriptions for the 2025-2026 school year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2025-06-254. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none. Mr. Lucio?
Ms. Perfect?
Yes.
Ms. Corr?
Yes.
Ms. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2025-06-254 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2025-06-255, authorization agreement for power school software.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2025-06-255. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none. Mr. Lucio?
Ms. Perfect?
Yes.
Ms. Corr?
Yes.
Ms. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2025-06-255 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2025-06-256, authorization renewal of student support materials for literacy intervention.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2025-06-256. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none. Mr. Lucio?
Ms. Perfect?
Yes.
Ms. Corr?
Yes.
Ms. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2025-06-256 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2025-06-257, approval to enter into an affiliation agreement between career and technical education job training. It's very intentional learning program of the Parma City School District and the Parma Hake Senior Center.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2025-06-257. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none. Mr. Lucio?
Ms. Perfect?
Yes.
Ms. Corr?
Yes.
Ms. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2025-06-257.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes finance.
Thank you, Ms. Perfect. This brings us to finance. Ms. Corr?
Yes, I move to adopt resolution 2025-06-258, approval and request for the advance of funds.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2025-06-258. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none. Mr. Lucio?
Ms. Corr?
Yes.
Ms. Ruda?
Yes.
Ms. Perfect?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2025-06-258 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2025-06-259, supplemental appropriations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2025-06-259. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none. Mr. Lucio?
Ms. Corr?
Yes.
Ms. Ruda?
Yes.
Ms. Perfect?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2025-06-259 has been approved.
Unless any other board member has anything to add, that will conclude finance.
Thank you, Ms. Perfect. This brings us to human resources. Ms. Perfect?
I move to adopt resolution 2025-06-260, approval for following certified exhibits, confirmation of certified appointments, confirmation of certified replacements, confirmation of stipend amounts, acceptance of certified resignation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2025-06-256, I'm sorry, 260. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none. Mr. Lucio?
Ms. Perfect?
Yes.
Ms. Ruda?
Yes.
Ms. Corr?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2025-06-260 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2025-06-261, acceptance of certified retirement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2025-06-261. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none. Mr. Lucio?
Ms. Perfect?
Yes.
Ms. Ruda?
Yes.
Ms. Corr?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2025-06-261 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2025-06-262, resolution to adopt the first modification to the employment agreement of the superintendent of schools of the Parma City School District.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2025-06-262. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none. Mr. Lucio?
Ms. Perfect?
Yes.
Ms. Ruda?
Yes.
Ms. Corr?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2025-06-262 has been approved.
I move to adopt, sorry, sorry. I move to adopt resolution 2025-06-263, resolution to enter into a consulting agreement between the Parma City School District Board of Education and Dr. Scott J. Hunt.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2025-06-263. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none. Mr. Lucio?
Ms. Perfect?
Yes.
Ms. Ruda?
Yes.
Ms. Corr?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2025-06-263 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2025-06-264, approval for following classified exhibits, confirmation of classified appointments, confirmation of classified replacements, confirmation of classified change of assignments, approval of classified non-compensated use of absence, acceptance of classified resignations, and acceptance of classified administrative resignation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2025-06-264. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none. Mr. Lucio?
Ms. Perfect?
Yes.
Ms. Ruda?
Yes.
Ms. Corr?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2025-06-264 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2025-06-265, accepting of classified retirements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2025-06-265. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none. Mr. Lucio?
Ms. Perfect?
Yes.
Ms. Ruda?
Yes.
Ms. Corr?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2025-06-265 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2025-06-266, permission to approve the contract agreement between the Parma City School District Board of Education, the Ohio Association of Public School Employees, Locals 122, 160, Corea 4, 695, and 756.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2025-06-266. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none. Mr. Lucio?
Ms. Perfect?
Yes.
Ms. Ruda?
Yes.
Ms. Corr?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2025-06-266 has been approved.
Just want to thank, we have some OC members here, and I want to make sure I recognize that, and efforts of Nate Crowe, who represents more OC members than anyone else in St. Louis, Sharon Fissick, who came for a button arbitration a few years ago. Jan P. Trash? Is that it? Correct?
Trash.
Trash, I'm sorry about that. Anyone else here from OC?
No, but we played, we said we'd be.
What's that, Scott? You're with OC?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Scott's with OC.
You got representing journalists now too? Is that, is that your partway? You got the journalists as well? I do want to thank them and all of our OC membership, because I know they held up votes and it was approved. I just want to make it very clear to our community that one of the ways that we've sustained ourselves since 2011 with no new money is the incredible grace of our labor associations that includes PEA. They continue to accept very, very modest increases that really don't even keep up with the mere where inflation is now, but even over the years haven't kept up. But they recognize that it really isn't cheap effort, they recognize where we're at physically as a district, and they recognize how important they are to our students. And we really are appreciative of their approach to this negotiation cycle, but also to the three now that we have been a part of during my seven years. So thank you, ladies, for being here tonight, and thank you again for your graciousness as we've worked through these processes.
Thank you.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes human resources.
Thank you. This is policies.
I move to adopt resolution 2025-06-267, approval of following revised policies. Policy 0169.1, public participation at board meetings, and policy 8500 food services.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2025-06-267. Any questions or comments from the board? Saying none. Mr. Lucio?
Ms. Corr?
Yes.
Ms. Perfect?
Yes.
Ms. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, resolution 2025-06-267 has been approved.
We have first reading of following new policies, policy 5780.01, parents bill of rights. Unless any other board member has anything to add, that will include policies.
Thank you, Ms. Corr. Any information or requests by the board? At this point, we open the meeting to the public to address the board with comments and/or concerns. Do we have any such requests? I have one such request. The request, if rehearsed or may be completed and submitted in person to the Administrator Secretary, Paul Stacey, shall be directed to the Board of the President. As per board policy 0169.1, comments that are repetitive, obscene, disparaging, abusive, irrelevant, and/or comments that constitute a threat will not be tolerated, and the Speaker will be asked to stop speaking in or to leave the meeting. Please note that various board policies exist which set forth processes and procedures to use in investigating and addressing personnel issues that cannot be addressed in public. As per board policies, we may not be able to respond directly or address some issues at this time. If information is not readily available, we will respond at our next regular meeting. Three minutes is allotted for a speaker. Please remember to state your name and address for the record, and would please share your name. Come forward, please.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Norman, that's 73, West Los Lions Parma. And I'm here tonight, I saw a lot of celebration, so don't want to do it, I'd be down there. But I have concerns about communication about the ACIS program to our parents and to the community. So I'm here tonight as a stakeholder, proud resident, former parent of two students that graduated from the Parma City School District, and a current family member who is a student in the district. He's very dear to me, he has severe autism, level three, verbal. He is participating in the preschool program, parent, and I was talking to his mom, I was like, oh my God, this is so great, like, ACIS, like, just learn about it, it's so wonderful, so wonderful, like, this is the right place to be, it's a fantastic program. And unfortunately, he wasn't placed there with an ER. And he's not normal, he's level three, and I just couldn't believe it, I'm like, how could that be? And then she was like, I can't find information about it, so I believe she's gonna ask for reassessment, because it's leaking a great commitment for the ACES program, but I do want to keep this on a level of, like, improvement for the community and district. Like, when I went to the Park City School District website, I typed ACES, and then I wanted to find information about it as well. So then, it was the fourth poll, the first poll was superintendent, the second was connection PTA, third was school calendar, the fourth was special education programs in Parma Park. But there was no emphasis, no reference to ACES, so that kind of stopped some parents from not knowing where they should look at. And then, when you call the general number that ends in five, three, two, zero, you get like an email, but then when you email, like, I emailed back, I'm like, well, can I get in contact with someone at ACES to get more information? And I did not get a return from a call or an email back. Because like, it was very important for me to contact someone at ACES and find out more about this program, because this program can provide the services that my, that my family and my mother could really benefit from, especially. And I've heard amazing things about, about this. And so, it's just very disappointing that she didn't know about this, and, you know, she doesn't have IEP. This was, this program was not emphasized, that she didn't even know it was a specialty for kids with diagnosed autism. So those are my concerns, and also, the parent mentor liaison, maybe there could be better communication on how parents can get in contact with the mentor, the liaison, the parent mentor liaison, so she could have really benefited from that as well.
Thank you for your comments and, and, Dr. Vaughn, can you...
Yeah, and we, I was just forwarded while you were speaking, an email that you sent out on Monday, we'll make sure that we follow up with that. You know, we can always sort of reassess how we put things on the website. The hard part about ACES, that is, makes it a little bit more dynamic in terms of how we want to communicate, that is, it's not something people opt into. It's not, you can't go site and hit up for ACES. It is a program that is determined through the IEP process. So if your, your child is best suited for ACES, that is a process that your IEP team, which, and you said your daughter was a part of that, I would imagine, would have been part of those conversations. We do have a wide spectrum of special education programs throughout the district. And so, while I don't, I can't speak instantly about your specific case, I know that IEP teams come together and make decisions about where the best placement is within the district. So they would have really weighed ACES as a potential. Now, again, we can communicate better, and we can, we can explain that to you and to your daughter more, but it just, part of the reason we don't really advertise it is it's not an opt-in program. You can't register for it, you have to go through that IEP process. But I, I do see the email that was just, so we'll reach out and we'll have a longer conversation about this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thanks for coming.
Yeah. Ma'am, I just have a quick question. Did you type just A-C-E-S or A period C period E period?
A-C-E-S.
Okay, I just did the same thing, and I had a hard time finding it. We've probably definitely clarified this by typing A period C period E period S period. That puts you to, it's a quicker length to where you can find, because I was able, I was able to find the things, but not with the way that you did it, so you're absolutely correct, so we definitely have to do something about that.
That would be wonderful. Has Twitter? I don't have Twitter, just...
No, this is, this is just the Parma School website.
Oh, yeah, definitely. But on that site, on the bottom, it says, for more information, go to Twitter. And I don't have Twitter.
This has, it has the ACES, ACES email.
Yeah.
I saw it somewhere.
That's okay.
I appreciate you.
You're right, so we'll get into that. We'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, and that's it. Let me just go on. So, with this, I move to adopt Resolution 2025-06-268 to adjourn to executive session relative to discussed personnel matters of unemployment and unemployment matters required to be kept confidential by state and federal laws. So this is for appointment and unemployment, and for compensation. We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2025-06-268. Is there any questions or comments from the board? We'll call Mr. Lucio.